I'm going, and this is my word.
Oh no, alright, okay. I'll sort of temper my response then, in accord.
I'm sure it will still be great.
Alright, Second Chronicles 5:7. My daily, I'm reading things out of what I pull out. And the reward, what is?
Hold on, can you read it, read it Brother Smith, if you don't mind?
Be strong, be strong and courageous, for your work will be rewarded.
Okay.
That's it. And so he says it all, and what does God want us to? One of us? Be strong and courageous. But is this promise, or it started with a promise, the promise is that we will be rewarded for our work? And what is the daily thing that I'm going to do to achieve this? I'm going to be strong, I'm going to be brave, I'm going to be confident, adventurous, willing to work, expectant of rewards, decisive, proactive, all of those words.
Oh, alright, a lot of stuff there Brother Smith. Alright, I'm starting to, to look back at my answers and see if I need to revisit my daily thing, that I want, little digga, digga thing on it. Yeah, excellent, excellent passage Brother Smith, excellent, excellent breakdown. Thank you for sharing, um, let me make sure I put down points for verse, lest I forget. Anybody else want to share? If you're free to raise your hand. Alright, go ahead Auntie Sally.
You want me to go ahead? Okay, good evening everyone. Proverbs 3:5 and 6. Trust in the Lord with all of your heart, and lean not on your own understanding. In all you, your ways acknowledge him, and he will direct your path.
Alright, um, what, what?
My path will be directed if I trust in him with all my heart, and lean not on my own understanding. That's the promise, my path. And my daily activity, I'll do a devotion in prayer and read in the Bible, so I can follow his words.
Okay, alright, thank you very much Auntie Sally. Anybody else? Go ahead Sister Smith.
Question Brother Stephen, in fact that Auntie Sally did for book, does book have to do anything more?
I mean, you, you can still, you can still participate in it, but yes, the points for book have been booked.
Oh, so I don't need to say anything then?
I'd, I'd still appreciate hearing it.
No, but I don't do these things just willingly, I need points.
Are, are we just here for points, or are we here just to learn?
Clearly, clearly the buttering of the bread has backfired. I'm sure you still, you still blessed us with, with your thoughts, Sister Smith.
Proverbs 16, verse 7. When a man's ways are pleasing to the Lord, he makes evil, the enemies, to be at peace with him. What he expects, what he requires of me, is that I do everything, whatever I do, to his honor and glory. Every deed, every thought, every action of mine must honor him. Name one daily thing. Meditating on the word day and night. You know, as it is written in Joshua 1:8, meditate day and night, and success will be yours. And how, this passage is very important to me, because it has been played out, I've seen it happening in my life. When we had our business at Red Hills Road, Infoserve at Red Hills Road, 120 Red Hills Road. Red Hills Road got hot at one period, guns to the left of us, guns to the right, they broke into this business place, they broke into that one, and at no time did they touch Infoserve at 120 Red Hills Road. So my aim really is to please God in all my ways, so that I, the enemy will be at peace with me. That's it, full stop.
Excellent, excellent Sister Smith, I, I attempted to give you a bonus point.
Please do, please do, fifty points, thank you.
I'm glad, fifty, in my mind, I put down fifty in my mind.
Well, that turns off Fabian or Stephen, nobody's going to say anything else. Definitely a book has points, verse has points, nobody going to say anything.
Yeah, I, I will, I will take that one into consideration, clearly, I need to learn how to greet the wheels properly.
Some of us are here to learn, some of us are here to learn.
And some of us are, some of us are here to learn.
For the majority, yeah, Brother Smith, yeah. Go ahead Brother David, to the rescue, or Sister Sandra, whoever's using it.
Sister Sandra.
Okay, go ahead Sister Sandra.
Okay, um, so mine is Isaiah 41, verse 10. It says, "So do not fear, for I am with you." Do not, hold on. Whoa, my phone just went off, alright. "So do not fear, for I am with you. Do not be dismayed, for I am your God. I will strengthen you and help you. I will uphold you with my righteous right, right hand." So, um, my daily, well, this passage is very helpful to me, because I, um, I suffer from a lot of anxiety, and, um, so I have to, you know, just try and remember that God says, He will never leave me, He will always be with me, I will not forsake you. And so daily I have to try and suppress my anxieties and my fear. Yours, I guess that's mine.
Thank you, thank you very much Sister Sandra. Um, I like, I like that we're choosing or, or sharing the passages that are particularly encouraging to us, because I think sometimes we take, we take the Bible as as a guidebook, but we don't really follow the guide, we don't really try to, to make the passages personal, not just when we read them, but as we go through the things that we go through. And that is one of the aims of, of this Bible class. When, not only identifying scriptures that I benefit from, but how do I use them like Jesus would use them? Going through my struggles, going through my trials, and, um, bringing them to the forefront of my mind when I am struggling with a particular thing, that's the, that's the aim, we want to get there where if you're anxious, the first passage that will come to mind is, "Do not fear, I am with you." And you can readily take encouragement from that, so thank you. Um, those who have shared thus far, Fayon, go ahead.
Good evening everyone. Um, my scripture is from Philippians 4, verses 6 to 7. And it says, "Do not be anxious about anything, but in everything by prayer and supplication, with thanksgiving, let your request be known to God. And the peace of God, which surpasses all understanding, will guard your hearts and mind in Christ Jesus." That's my scripture, and one thing, one of the requirements is that I should trust God and submit everything to him in prayer. And one thing I can do daily, and I'm borrowing from Sister Smith's, some of her words, is meditate on the words of the Lord, day and night.
Alright, thank you. Thank you very much Fayon, I'm sure Sister Smith won't mind you borrowing her word since it's both on in book. Go ahead Sister Paula.
Hi, good evening everyone. Um, my scripture was Isaiah 41, verse 10, but Sister, Sister Sandra did it, so I'll change to John 16, verse 33, where it says, "I have told you these things, so that in me you may have peace. In this world you will have trouble, but take art, I have overcome the world." Um, what I ident, I identified that God require of me is to trust him in everything I do. I remember when my sister was very ill and in the hospital, I, when I saw her and I seen, seen her going down, I was like praying, "Lord, just give me peace." And when my sister was, other sister was crying out, I just hold them and said, "God will give us peace." The peace that passes, understand, pass, passes all understanding. And that hope, I remember that, that God said those words, and I just hold on to it. So even when time from morning, I, I did not mourn, because I asked God for peace, and I felt a sense of relief when I asked him. Even when I saw her last breath leaving earth, I felt peace, because I asked God. And for number three, name one daily thing that are going to, what I am going to do, what I do is to continue to read his word, understand his word, and apply as much as I can to my life, as much as I understand. So just to read his word and continue.
Thank you very much Sister Paula. A lot of, as I said, a lot of personal, um, testimonies too. And that's, that is, that is a part of what we have been studying thus far, looking at the things that we've gone through, you know, the pill of past providence, looking at what God has brought us through, and using that as motivation, looking at the things that he promises us, and using that as motivation to, to stay on course. Um, it's easy to, to get distracted, it's easy to, to feel like, you know, it's, it's too much. And if we focus on the struggles, if we focus on the problems, then it is even easier to get distracted and distraught. So let us, as we move on, let us remember how important it is to take these pills daily, to think about the things that we have now to be grateful for, to appreciate whilst we still have them. And to think about the things that we can do now, what is still possible for us to achieve, to solve at this moment, and let us focus on those things. But just look to the past, to the things that God has brought us through, the things that God has helped us to learn from the experiences that we have triumphed through, even the experiences of failure, and the lessons that we have learned from that. And let us look at the things that God promises us, the things that are to come, um, and use that as motivation, and a lot of the times we don't really think, when we think of, of judgment, more often than not we think of, "Oh no, I don't want God to say the parts on me." But how often do we think of the better life? Do we think of the fact that boy, you know, all of these bills, all of these, um, crime wars, the corruption, all of these things that from day to day pester your mind? One day these things will be no more, we're going to be a place where there, in a place where there's no more death. That is a promise that God has given to us, for us to appreciate now, for us to live a particular way now, knowing that boy, any tribulation, any torment, any struggle, any stress pales in comparison to what he will provide for us. We need to use these promises to give us peace, to give us joy, to give us hope, right now. Not just when they come, but right now. Remember when David was talking about it, he usually speaks about his children, and he would say that if you tell them that they're going to Disney World next week, the excitement begins now. Can I jump, jump up and down like them leaving in the next two minutes? That is what, when we think of the promises of God, that's the mentality that we need to have, an excitement in expectation of. Alright, um, thanks to everyone who shared. I would share mine, but I already went through my, my few of mine in actual lessons, so let me not bore any further. And we will now move into greener pastures as we look at our next subject. Why this slide not working, oh, password? Okay, boy, the hands are up, go ahead Britannia.
Grease is grief.
Alright, that's right, Britannia said, "Boys, you want back the crown, I like it." That's correct, and that is what we are going to be looking at now, alright, um. My, my PowerPoint skills betraying me. Alright, so we are back at diagnosis, and just for those who may be wondering what we diagnose it. So remember that we have been looking at the sheep. And because the study is lost, we have been looking at ways in which the sheep get lost. The first one that we looked at, scatterbrain syndrome, spoke to the fact that the sheep don't really plot, no, don't plot their own course at all. So a sheep will get lost if they are led down a path that is not the right path. So that is, or if there is no shepherd to lead them. We looked at Botbug, which looked at the fact that sheep get lost because they hesitate when they see shadows, or they correct their course when they see dips in the ground, and that takes them away from the herd. And if the shepherd leaves, or the herd leaves, then the sheep is lost. And now we're looking at grazers grief, and we're going to see how, how grazers grief causing the sheep to be lost. The once upon a, a good amount of decades ago, I had, when we were looking at this initially, the introduction, I had brought up the idea of grazers and browsers. So grazer is an animal, usually a herbivorous mammal, which eats grass. It is contrasted with browsers, which eat trees and shrubs. So you have goats, for example, are both grazers and browsers, meaning that they will eat grass, but they will also eat leaves from trees and shrubs. Whereas sheep are only grazers. So sheep don't eat tree leaf, sheep don't eat shrubbery, sheep, sheep eat grass. In extremely dire scenarios where sheep are dying of hunger, you might see a sheep go out of its way to browse, but for the most part, they will walk and walk and walk and walk and walk past tree and shrub to find grass, because that is what they eat, and that is how they live. So sheep are grazers. Oh, lots, my, my PowerPoint skills are wanting this evening. Um, so symptoms, what are some of the symptoms of grazer grief? So the first symptom that we're seeing is head downedness. Head downedness, and I know Sister Debbie in here saying, if Sister Debbie's in here, she's going to be saying, "What kind of madness has Stephen concocted this evening?" As, as we know, as the Bible class teacher, I have license to, to, to use the words that I plead, and this is the word that I'm using. And head downedness speaks to a state where one's head is in a downward position for a long period of time, so that is what head downedness is. Very simple, very elegant, very easy to understand, I'm sure. And sheep spend majority of their time with their head down while grazing, which makes sense. If grass is all you eat, and the grass is on the ground, and sheep don't have hands to pick the grass and take it up and then put it to their mouth, but they have to, to lower their heads so that their teeth can get to the grass. Teeth in the mouth, the mouth is in the head, so the head has to go down to the grass. Head downedness. And the other symptom of grazer grief is what we call wandering. And wandering is when the sheep wanders away from the flock whilst grazing. So the sheep is eating, the sheep is focusing on what it is eating, but people who know how grass is set up, when you eat a particular patch of grass, there, in that patch, there is no more grass, the grass does not grow back instantly after you eat it. So what do you have to do if you want more grass? You have to move. So you move a little to the right, or you move a little to the left, or you move a little forward, and you eat a next patch, and you eat a next patch, and you eat a next patch. Before you know it, where you were when you started eating the grass is not where you are two hours later, because you have to keep moving so that you get access to more grass. And that is the wandering that we're talking about in sheep. When sheep are grazing, they eat, 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 and they keep moving from patch of grass to patch of grass when they already consume the grass in a particular area. What are the causes for these two things? So the cause for head downedness firstly starts in the fact that grass in and of itself has a small amount of nutrients. It's a poor source of nutrition, essentially. So for sheep who primarily eat grass, to get the amount of nutrients that they need, they have to eat a whole heap of grass. Whole, whole heap of grass. What does that mean then? Sheep spend most of their time eating grass. And what is the position of the sheep's head whilst eating grass? Downward. So clearly, a symptom of sheep, of sheep grazing is head downedness, because they have to eat a whole heap of grass, and to eat a whole heap of grass, they have to keep their head down. Very simple. Wandering, because sheep consume grass quickly, it requires them to move from one patch to another whilst grazing. So unlike human being, human beings who can't stomach grass, who would have to sit down on a chew, 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 to the point where we believe it can be swallowable. The sheep consume grass very quickly. They have multiple stomachs, so one stomach will hold the grass while another stomach is digesting it. So they can chew this, the, the grass, get the grass in their system, and they just get more grass in their system, and they don't have to worry about where the grass is going, if them stomach will go full up, if they have to keep chewing, no, they just eat the grass. So because the sheep consume the grass so quickly, they move, they wander consistently whilst grazing. What are the implications of this? Alright, so the implication of head downedness and wandering is that the sheep will become lost, or will be lost, if the flock and/or shepherd move too far away whilst the sheep's head is down whilst grazing. So if a sheep gets preoccupied in eating, and it keeps its head down for an extended period of time, and in that time, the flock or the shepherd moves away from that sheep, then that sheep will be lost. Likewise, if the sheep in its grazing wanders too far away from the flock, then the sheep will be lost. Two ways that the sheep could be lost. By keeping its head down for too long, and those around it leaving it, or being carried away by its own grazing and ending up leaving the flock. What did Caffey do with us now? I'm sure a lot of us have made our own correlation, but let us see if we can look at something, so. Symptoms for us, head downedness as a Christian. So we display, sorry, we display head downedness when the effort, energy, or time I invest in spiritual activities is limited. So when the effort, energy, or time that I invest in spiritual activities is limit, limited, then my head is down, I am focused on something else. And wandering, when my involvement in necessary secular activity becomes skewed in a sinful way. So please note, it says necessary secular activity, and if you notice with the sheep, eating is necessary for the sheep to survive, it has to eat. Similarly for us as Christians, secular activity is a necessary part of life. We need to go to work, we need to make money, we need to eat, we need to enjoy ourselves, these are things that are encouraged biblically speaking. But just as the sheep can end up being lost, carrying out a necessary function, we as Christians can become lost, carrying out necessary functions. And that is what grazer grief is. When one ends up being carried away because of the things that aren't necessary, when they become the thing that makes us lost, whether it becomes a distraction, whether it becomes a sin, that is grazer grief for the Christian. The thing that is important, but that becomes too important. So what are the causes? So for head downedness, one of the causes is I struggle with proper prioritizing. So maybe the reason I am not putting out the right effort, energy, and time is because I'm not prioritizing properly. It's not that I don't think God is important, I'm just not putting the things, or the activities, or the efforts in the right order. So I intend to do this, I intend to give God this, but because I started, or I did this first, or I gave this here first, or I put this out first in another area, now when I come to do what I believe in my head is more important, what I have to give is lacking. So whether it be my energy, I'm drained, I don't have the amount of energy left to give that what I wanted, whether it be the money that I plan to give, I already put that in all the other places, whether it be the time that I wanted to give, that has now been taken away. Alright, um, so David asked the question, are the necessary activities that distract us one? Only secular can church activities have the same effect? Um, Kirk said, "Would you say a person getting heavily involved in spiritual matters while his family falls apart?" And I saw Claudine's hand, Claudine, I don't answer that question, or was it accidental? Claudine? Alright, I'm presuming it's accidental, but if it wasn't Claudine, feel free to re-raise your hand. So to answer your question David, yes. So maybe secular isn't the right word that I wanted to use. Um, necessary or important, focus on that part, the necessary or important. So it can be church activities, it can be secular activities, both of them can have the same effect. If they lead to us improperly prioritizing, where the church activities are taking away from things that should be given a certain amount of time, or a certain amount of energy, or a certain amount of effort, then yes, that, that is very much a state of grazer grief. And similar, that part especially is highlighted in the, "I have too much things on my plate." That is another reason why we have head downedness, because there is so much to deal with, I don't get a time to list up my head. I am consistently down in this. So when I now need to lift up my head to give God what is due him, I don't have anything left because it has been taken with all of these things. Either it is improper prioritizing, or I just have too many things to do, I'm too busy. Um, let me get, I never saw Kirk, answer Kirk's question, I'm sorry. Would you say a person getting heavily involved in spiritual matters? So that, that aligns with what David, David brought up. Because as Christians, a lot of the times we deem church activities as spiritual matters outside of how God establishes them. So there, there are things that God requires of us to be good Christians. And a part of that, for example, is taking care of your family. If you don't take care of your family and you are, because you are preoccupied with spiritual matters, then God is not pleased with you because what one of the things that God requires is taking care of your family. There's even a passage I believe that states, that, um, states that certain positions you need to take into consideration, what you can give. Because there are certain things, once you become a particular individual, be it a father, be it a husband, you now have responsibilities that God requires you to carry out. So don't presume that you can now say, oh, this is God's work, this is God's work, this is God's work, and disregard the responsibility that God requires of you based on the position that you now hold. So, good, good questions, David, thank you for the clarification, good question for it as well. So yes, so two cases of head, two causes of head downedness, as I said, one, I struggle with proper prioritizing, or two, I'm just too busy, I have too many things on my plate. Wandering, my actions are driven by greed. So one of the ways that good things or seeking after things that are good in and of themselves can be a bad thing is if I am motivated by greed. So one person over here doing the same thing as another person over here, one person can be doing the right thing and another can be doing the wrong thing, even though they are doing the same thing based on their motive. And if what I am going after, if where my attention is, is because of my greed, then I am wandering, and that is one of the ways where doing things that aren't bad in and of themselves can become a bad thing. So I want, I want more than I should, I want in excess, I am greedy, I am driven by greed. And then the second is, I am not content or satisfied. And this one may sound like the first one, but there is a slight difference, difference. So greed is in excess. What I have, I want more of. Whereas discontentment is what I have, I don't like. Or what I have is not enough. Well, that last part sounded like the first part. So you cannot be striving for more, but still be dissatisfied with what you have. And that is, I guess, the main difference. So the greed, I, I keep wanting more, the dissatisfaction, boy, you see this right, this is not, this is not nice. This is not nice. And more often than not, greedy people aren't so much dissatisfied with what they have, but rather dissatisfied with the fact that they don't have more. So they like what they have to the point where they want to multiply it. Whereas the, the discontented don't like it at all. And having both of these is, this is devastation. If you're greedy and you have issues with contentment, this will lead you down the road that the Bible speaks of consistently. So we have to be careful of, of these, of what causes these, these symptoms. Implications. So as a Christian, with real head downedness and wandering, I am lost if what I am investing in my secular life slash Christian work life negatively affects what I am invested in my spiritual life. Please note there's a difference between doing church work and investing in your spiritual life. So if what I am investing in, in my secular slash church work life negatively affects what I am investing in my spiritual life, then I can be lost. And if I am making time for my secular life and finding time for my spiritual life, then more than likely I will be lost. And please note the difference between those two verbs. Making time versus finding time. Making time means that of my schedule, this is delegated from the twenty-four hours. So when I make time for something, my twenty-four hours are free and I put something in that slot. That is making time. Everything else now has to fit around what I have made time for. And the things that fit around the things I make time for are the things I now find time for. I have to now look for open slots and then place the things I'm finding time for in them. And if I have no open slots, then those things will now have to move to another day or to another week until I do have that open slot. And if we are making time for a secular slash church work life and we are finding time for a spiritual life, then we are in problems. Because that means that our priority is wrong, or the display of said priority. Because they can't definitively tell people that God is not first, but you can tell them if they're not placing Him first. And how we make versus find time is a reflection of how we prioritize. Alright, so let's look at some cases, let's see if we can look at some individuals in the Bible that can give us an understanding of how this disease or disorder is facilitated. So we're going to look at Martha, we're going to look at the rich fool, and we're going to look at the thief absconders. And I know the thief absconders ties in with Brother Grenner's recent sermon about distraction. That's one of the big things with grazer's grief. Is that things that don't necessarily, aren't necessarily bad can become things that pull us away from God. Those kind of distractions are devastating distractions. Going to need three readers. Alright, so we have Sister Brit, Sister Paula, we need one more. And Sister Tessa. Alright, wonderful. So Britannia, you are yellow, Sister Paula, you are green, and Sister Tessa, you get the wonderful task of voicing our Lord and Savior Jesus, you are red. Alright, Sister Britannia, you can start us off.
Now it happened as they went, that he entered a certain village and a certain woman named Martha welcomed him into her house. And she had a sister called Mary, who also sat at Jesus's feet and heard His words. But Martha was distracted with much serving and she approached him and said,
Lord, do you not care that my sister has left me to serve alone? Therefore, tell her to help me.
And Jesus answered and said to her,
Martha, Martha, you are worried and troubled about many things, but one thing is needed, and Mary has chosen that part which will not be taken away from her.
Thank you, thank you, well read, well read, all my readers, well read. Alright, so I realize that I, 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 I'm not giving out enough points, so. For each of these questions, somebody from the particular team has to give me the answer. Once you give me an answer, there is no wrong or right answer, this is just your answer. Points will be assigned to the team. So Book, would you diagnose Martha with grazer's grief? Anybody from Book? Yeah, man, go ahead, Kirk. Kirk?
Yes, I would. Um, especially, um, the way, um, Jesus, um, um, addressed her in terms of, um, you know, what Mary was doing and what she was doing and how he saw it. I would definitely, um, diagnose it as grazer's grief.
Alright, thank you, sir. Um, what symptom did she show? Chapter, somebody from chapter talked to me. Was there head downedness, was there wandering? Do you disagree with Book and think that she never displayed any of these? Anybody from chapter, go ahead, David? David?
I would say that she struggled with proper prioritizing.
Alright, fall on the head downedness.
Yes, she had too many things on her plate.
And, and too many things on her plate, so both of those would fall on the head downedness. Alright, excellently done, Sister Stan here. Um, verse, oh, Sister Stan, that, that will, verse, you still get the chance, and I don't think you do agree with her. Or not, what was the cause of her symptoms, verse? Go ahead, Britannia.
Struggles with proper prioritizing, busyness. Yeah, and busyness.
Alright, I, I agree with everything that was said. Anybody in disagreement? Feel free to raise your hand. Alright, wonderful, so I'm sure we can all agree that Martha suffered, at least at that time, some grazer's grief. Moving on. The rich fool, one of my favorite parables. And I feel like we, we're doing my little dirty, but, um, going to need three readers. Alright, so we have Fion, who is in yellow, Brother La Count, who is in green, and Kirk, who is in red. So Kirk, you shall be Jesus in this rendition. So Fion, you can begin.
Then one from the crowd said to him,
Teacher, tell my brother to divide the inheritance with me.
But he said to him,
Man who made me a judge over me you.
And he said to them,
Jesus, I mean Kirk.
Take, oh, hold on, I'm not saying give in trouble, just give me one single minute.
Minute or nothing like that.
Sorry about that. Take heed and beware of covetousness for ones that does not consist in the abundance of the things he possesses.
Then he spoke a parable to them, saying,
The ground of a rich man yielded plentifully. And he thought within himself,
What shall I do since I have no room to store my crops?
So he said,
I will do this, I will to, uh, pull down my barns and build greater. And there I will store all my crops and my goods. And I will say to my soul, soul, you have many good, goods laid up for many years. Take your ease, eat, drink and be merry.
What God said to him?
Fool, this and that your soul will be required of you, then whose will those things be which you have provided?
So he's the who lays up treasures for himself and is not rich toward God.
Alright, well read, well read, everybody. Um, alright. Let's start with verse. Would you diagnose the rich fool with grazer's grief? Somebody from verse, let me know. A simple yes or no suffice, you don't have to give me an explanation. You might just help out the other people.
Yes, I would diagnose him with grazer's grief.
Alright, okay, that is, Engel, good to hear you, Engel. Oh, Engel, tell me happy anniversary as well. Um, Book, what symptoms or symptoms did he show? Head downedness or wandering, or both or neither? Anybody from Book? Go ahead, Brother Jason.
Yes, uh, he, he was prioritizing the sort of the secular things, uh, over God. In fact, uh, he wasn't even prioritizing over God, he completely negated God from his plans. It became just about the secular things in his life.
Okay, alright, so that sounds like head downed, head downedness. Chapter? What was the cause of his symptoms? Anybody from chapter?
What, what Brother Jason just said.
Okay, so, so struggles with proper prioritizing to the point where there's almost no prioritizing. Alright, you know, um, do you think that whenever I hear this story, or it is being used by other individuals, whether it be in a message or in a Bible class, they come down very hard on, on the rich fool? Okay, I've seen somebody from chapter adding greed and lack of contentment. So they'll come down very hard on the rich fool. May I ask you a question? Um, let's, let's read from verse seventeen. Now, let's go back a little. So yes, so verse sixteen, so Jesus is speaking about the rich fool. And he says, the ground of a certain rich man yielded plentifully. And he thought, thought within himself, saying, what shall I do since I have no more room to store my crops? So the first thing that we see here is that this man has grown that he's bringing forth plentifully. So it, it didn't necessarily say that he had a whole heap of grounds, but we know that the ground that he has is bringing forth a holy, to the point where he no longer has rooms. He then says, I will do this, I will pull down my barns and build greater. And there I will store all my crops and my goods. And I will say to my soul, soul, you have many goods laid up for many years. Take your ease, eat, drink and be merry. Stop the parables here. Has the man done anything wrong?
Yes.
What would you say he has done wrong, Brother?
The last verse.
Thank you.
Everything was wonderful up within.
So you, you have many good things laid up for many years, take your ease, eat, drink and be merry?
Yeah, exactly, in other words, it's nice to, to be, um, a good steward, so you don't want the thing to waste, although you can give it away to people, but the whole point now is that, that satisfaction, that piece of saying, soul, you have many goods laid up, so in other words, he's putting his trust in his goods. Um, uh, not looking at who, where the goods come from and it can be taken away from you, all of that. But yeah, he's good steward, extend, extend the barn, although you could question, what is he throwing it up for, but that's, that's what I would say, I would say that the real problem was that satisfaction, that, that security, finding insecurity in his goods.
Okay, um, can we say that we are different? Is this not probably, the, the way it is carried out comes across differently because we don't have, that's not our setup. We're not, we're not, but don't we, in the prime of our lives, But don't we in the prime of our lives work very hard with the hopes that what we achieve will bring about further achievements, it will bring about further achievement so that we can reach a point where we say, okay, what I have achieved is enough to sustain me. I can now plateau, I can relax. This is my take, ease, my eat, my drink and be merry. You hear that term?
No, my name isn't Bill.
I would say you're foolish. If you do that, you're foolish because I love it.
David, David, go ahead.
I don't think there's anything wrong with the desire to ease, eat, drink and be merry. I think where he went wrong is that he is, as Bruce said, he has not acknowledged God. And he has not acknowledged the fact that things may change. But to say that there's something wrong, our grand would say that you want to eat, drink and be merry. Then that contradicts some of what Solomon said in Ecclesiastes, that one must enjoy the life and enjoy the fruit of our labor. So I don't think there's anything wrong with it. But it was all about him and his effort and his reward and not recognizing that God is the source of it. And also not recognizing that he could all go.
I've always, good points, David, let me read some things in the chapter. Kirk says, he is securing his pension. Nothing wrong in my opinion. What I would wrong him for is not recognizing God anywhere in the process. Alright, good point Kirk. Engel said, then God called him fool. I will find all the reasons why he's taking ease must be looked at negatively before it could be argued either way. God knew his heart. Okay, alright, fair point Engel, that God knows exactly why this man is a fool. What I find very interesting is when God said to him, fool, this night your soul will be required of you. Then whose will those things be which you have provided? God was very specific. God spoke to the fact that he made declarations of the future. He made plans to use the things that he had stored up for his own purposes. And God said to him, boy, God called him a fool and then says, this night, your soul will be required of you. So you are making plans about the future. You are making plans about what you're going to do with the things that you have. Not knowing that your last night is tonight. Would God look at some of us the same if tomorrow was our last or tonight was our last night? Would God look at some of the things that we are planning? Some of the goals that we are setting, some of the tearing down and building up that we have in mind, some of the setting aside monetarily and say fool. You know, tonight or your last night. Who, 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 well, I know definitively for me that that is more of an answer for the people who have children. I guess we know where those things are going. But it is interesting what God says to him. Yes, Jesus reiterates why it is said like that. And says that if you lay up treasure for yourself and you're not rich toward God, then you are like this man. But I do find it interesting that in the parable, that is one of the things that God brings to light. The idea of our mortality, if I want to put it that way, the idea of man planning while God laughs. And that's one of the things that we were going to see in in counteracting or combating grave of grief. Numbering our day, recognizing the futility of man is one of the things that can help us to to overcome the distractions, the things that we seek. David says, okay, point taken, teach us the number of days. Brother Smith says, I find it interesting that the parable says the man says soul without thinking about the stories of the soul.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just seen that for the first time that
I just, when you said it, it brought it to my attention.
That he says soul, you know, so that means he has some consciousness that there is that thing called a soul.
But wait, but it is deliberate, this man, no. This isn't a war beyond to me in my ignorance. This man understands what his life is made up of, but just presumes it to be an extensive thing. And a lot of us, as much as we should plan, I feel have a certain level of complacency in regards to our belief that we will live for a particular time. I don't think we honestly have come to the group that today could be our last day. David now brings up a question on this subject. What is the balance between planning and understanding or morality? I love how David asks these questions, although I am going to now be able to answer that properly. Before I get to that, Engel says, we plan not thinking that God can make his appearance now. Brother Smith excellently says, may I share some degree what David has. Go ahead brother, share a way.
No, no, not the thing you have to, but no, we have been cheering in workshop and so on, the time management. The question of, one of the exercises is if you had three months to live, you know, go to the doctor, come home, you have three months to live. What would you do? You know, create two lists. One of things you would do, things you wouldn't do. Alright, and it distills. And by the way, something that we could usually do is useful in terms of bringing to focus the priorities. You know, all of us that working overtime and doing all of that. I've never seen anybody say, well, boy, I need to go spending some extra hours to get the work done. But what I'm saying though is that that then brings a list up of things that are short term, clearly three months, whatever. But can you live your life like that? Because what then if you were to live for 10 more years? So that is the dynamic that I'm really, exactly where David going, but it's just another perspective of it is. Are you? You know, because I got to the point where I started to say, live every day as if it is your last. But if you do that, then you're almost going to be ending up, you know, like with your head down like the sheep. Head downedness because you only going to look at the next day or the next 24, you know, 48 hours are, you know, very short. And in which case some of the wisdom that we ask about, which is longer term, you know. That's a big question, that's what I don't know. How do we look at the reality that tomorrow is not promised? But at the same time, we need to be wise and we need to plan out things. In other words, the guy who buried the talent could say, well, okay, you know, there's no long term future. So what am I going to invest in? That's the dynamic that, you know, David is going and sort of what we are grappling with. So now Stephen, you have to unravel all of that, please, thank you.
I loved how you started brother Smith. I am not a fan of how you ended. Because I feel like you ended by reaffirming the question that David brought up. A thing I had by brother Lacount, go ahead, see brother Lacount now coming with the answer. Amen brother Lacount.
Yeah, I know about the answer. But when I read this, like for many years when I read it, I almost felt like at first he was almost, he died as a consequence, right? Like your soul is required of you, like because you behave this way. And that's, I don't really think that's the case. It was just happenstance. He was saying you're a fool because you're not diversifying, right? His retirement plan was he was going to work hard enough, build up enough. And then one day, he or one season or crop, he was good. He hit retirement. He had enough to retire and take it easy. But God basically admonishes him because he wasn't diversifying. You invested only in the world for your retirement, but you did nothing for your spiritual retirement. And we've given the example throughout, you know, the scriptures that that sort of diversifying comes from putting God first, your first fruits. And so there is a balance to strike and I think it starts with just placing God first. If this story had start or gone the way of, you know, I have all these crops. First I will go to the temple and see what they need or my neighbors and see what they need. And I will help those around me. And then what I have left, I will use to store up and take it easy. Then would he have been called a fool? Or would God said, you know, you've done wisely, you've understood the long term retirement was your spiritual health in heaven with me and you're going to show up to heaven with me having done right by me and my people. As well as understanding that you could live another year and have also been planning for the future with the blessings that God had given you. So I think it's maybe less about an amount here or there. And it starts with the mindset of God first and diversifying both your physical needs in your retirement and in the spiritual ones.
Excellently, excellently said brother Jesus. I saw another hand, okay, go ahead, brother Engel.
I just want to read a scripture passage in James and see if it can throw a bit of light on the discussion.
Almost, this may be a passage that we see later, go ahead.
James chapter four, from verse thirteen to verse sixteen. Come now, you who say today or tomorrow will go to such and such a city and spend a year there and engage in business and make a profit. Yet you do not know what your life will be like tomorrow. You are just a vapor that appears for a little while and then vanishes away. Instead, you ought to say, if the Lord wills, we will live and also do this or that. But as it is, you boast in your arrogance. All such boasting is evil. Of course, he said in verse seventeen, he doesn't know it to do good and do it not to such a person is his sin. One other thing this passage clears up teaching is that nothing is wrong with planning for the future. But the future should never be void of God and God's will. That's my contribution.
Alright, well said. If you note how Jesus ends the parable. He says, so is he who lays up treasure for himself and is not rich toward God. So the condition of being a fool is the lack of richness towards God. So if he had laid up treasure for himself and was rich toward God, there would have been nothing, he would not have been described as a fool. Or you will not be a fool if you are rich towards God in your laying up of treasure. So Jesus never knocked the laying up of treasure in and of itself. Jesus is not saying that the actions that he took in and of themselves were negative. But the fact that there was something missing is what made him a fool. The fact that he prioritized the physical over the spiritual is what made him a fool. And that is essentially what we're going to be getting into specifically in grave of grief. Ensuring that our priority, our majority of focus is not in the physical things, but in the spiritual things. Engel, let me read Engel's thing before we close. Engel said, I believe we would act and do things so much differently if we knew God was coming tonight. But we do not do so because we don't really think so. But is that wrong though, that I would be preaching now to everyone, get ready? But now I only preach it once a week as an example. What is a good question Engel? That's a good question. I'm sure if we knew that God was coming tonight, we would be on the floor with our family members begging them, sort out yourselves now. That's not the approach that we take. I guess this is an urgency, but to answer that question specifically. I'm not sure if it's a case where we're not doing what we should be doing because we should treat it like every day is a possibility that God could come. That's an interesting question that we need to ask ourselves. Are we doing only so much because we have a belief that God not coming for now? Is our lives outside of the preaching? Is the lifestyle that I'm living, would I live, would I be comfortable living how I'm living now? If I heard that God was coming, let's not even say tonight, next week? How drastically would my behavior change? How drastically would my spiritual life change? And if in our heads we can think that there are drastic changes that would be made, then that means we need to make drastic changes. Because we have recognized that how we are living now is not satisfactory in when God comes back. So that's very, very, very interesting analogy there Engel. Password. Password for next week. But God said to him, fool. That is our password for Sunday, sorry, not next week, but Sunday. But God said to him, fool, please do not forget the but. Alright, thank you for participating and very encouraging Bible class. Thank you for all the people who read and answered and shared. Looking forward to Sunday and continuing this study. Alright, thank you. Hand over to the closing prayer. Prayer. Okay, I'm not hearing the closing prayer prayer, so I guess I'll take over that role. Are there any prayer requests?
Engel is down to do it.
Oh, okay, Engel?
Yes, sorry, I was actually looking at the roster and I saw my name and I was trying to mute everybody and started rolling myself. It was six in the air. Oh, well, sorry.
Problem, go ahead.
Let us go to God in prayer. Almighty, wonderful heaven, earth and father, we truly all got are thankful that we were able to participate in tonight's Bible discussion. We pray, oh father, that as we have learned, oh father, some of the diagnosis regarding the not, sorry, putting too many things on our plate, not prioritizing properly, not acknowledging you and having you first in our life. We just ask the Lord that if we see these things as patterns of our life, that father, we will do necessary, take the necessary steps to make the right correction. We pray, oh God, that this will not just be something of an intellectual head knowledge, but in reality, father, we will make practical steps to making those amendments in our life. We continue to pray, oh father, for the end allers. We pray, oh God, for the marshals. We pray, oh God, for all who are grieving at this time because of the loss of someone. We just, father of God, ask that you continue to keep us and help us so far to get through these challenging times. We continue to pray, oh father, as we remember the planning of our upcoming gospel meeting. We ask, oh father, that this is geared towards non Christians to increase those of the kingdom. So we pray that we will, for wisdom, that we will be able to regard to, not just that it's been another meeting that passed by, but in some real way of God, we make some, we take those steps that will help others to come to the knowledge of Jesus Christ and understand what it means, oh father, to simply just be a Christian. What it means, oh father, to the reality of you in this in why you sent your son Jesus Christ to this world. And we just ask, oh father, that be able to regard to have an impact in our communities through this gospel meeting. We also pray, oh God, for the mission and the work of the congregation. We also pray, oh God, for the mission and the work of the congregation. Keep us together, oh Father. We pray for unity. We pray, oh God, that we continue to not get weary in well-doing. We continue to pray for the better class teacher, that you continue to be with brother Stephen, to give him, oh Father, um, good health, that he be able, their God, to continue to deliver these um inspirational lessons. We pray for each other and we continue, oh God, as I give you thanks um for your blessings on my marriage union, that you continue to pray for me and my family. We also pray for the Smiths who are also celebrating their union as well. This, oh Father, is our prayer. Through Jesus Christ, they may pray. Amen. Thanks again, everyone, for, for being out this, tonight was truly a great um Bible class um presentation. Um, as we have our announcements, let us remember that next week, Sunday, this Sunday will begin our um gospel meeting. And so we encourage you to um start to spread the word. If you haven't started, if you have started to continue, see how we can make an impact. I wish there was a way we could even have a projector out in front of the church. Let's, let's be innovative, share ideas what we can do to um, to have an impact on others so that they can learn more about Jesus Christ. Um, we don't have to wait until the gospel meeting if there are studies. Um, individuals who are interested in studies, we can through to the fifteenth. Navigation Life Series begins the nineteenth of December. So let us mark that down in our calendars. Um, the nineteenth of December, brother Alan Casey will continue with part two of this very um enriched um discussion. Um, he has a lot of information to share, both he and brother Smith, and so please um mark this in your calendars. Also, you can share the recordings that are there with others so that they can pick their interest um to be a part of this um discussion. Please remember the closing drive continues on Monday, Wednesdays and Saturdays between the hours of nine to twelve P M. We have the collection drive. If you wish to do any donations outside of these hours, then we can ask that you contact the phone number eight seven six five three two nine eight nine one WhatsApp or call and um, persons will have the discussion as to how best to accommodate your um exceptions. Please remember our watch night service is the last day of the year, December the thirty first. It begins at ten P M. We'll be on Zoom. And so we will have our watch night service and further details regarding the planning of this and what will be done. Um, most likely we will get all gears kicking with this after our gospel meeting. So please remember December thirty first will be our watch night service. And then to begin the new year, or part of the new year, we kick start it with our gospel meeting, and this will be January the tenth to the thirteenth, seven P M. Nightly, the speakers will be brother Michael Roberts um in Alabama, former minister of the Barnes Bank Corrogation, brother Dave Osborne, and brother Sheldon Shirley will be the speakers for our gospel meeting next year, January tenth to the thirteenth. And these are our special announcements. These keep them in mind. And let us plan as we look forward to having a special, special gospel meeting this coming Sunday. In terms of birthdays, please remember that Gabby's birthday will be on Friday. Yes, Gabrielle's birthday will be on Friday. And so we will call and we will text the family or her directly, if you have her information, to wish her a wonderful and happy birthday. We celebrate with the Browns on their wedding anniversary and thirteen years. And we celebrate with the Smiths on their wedding anniversary, forty seven years. Um, Sister Marshall, the Marshals will be having their wedding anniversary on Friday, as well as Gabby's birthday on Friday. So Friday is a birthday and a wedding anniversary. So let us all remember these and um let them feel appreciated. Those are our announcements. If there's any other thing, you can stay back, greet one another um and say hello. And but we break here at this time.